Okay. Yeah, it's to me. I can't remember what you're doing or not here.
Welcome everyone to the, uh, to a special meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board for October 22nd, 2018. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I don't usually dress like this in October, November, but this was given to me last week at our, my last official regular planning board meeting. So I decided to wear it tonight just so I could say I wore it to a meeting. But anyway.
Aloha.
Okay, so we have one, uh, item on the agenda that's Hudson Heritage Conformance and Secret Refinings for a Proposed Modified Development Master Plan for a total 750 residential units, 35,000 square feet of new commercial space, and adaptive reuse of the administrative main wing and five other buildings, and site plan and subdivision review for Phase One development consisting of 125 multiple multifamily residential units and five buildings with 168 parking spaces, a total of 193,300 square feet commercial space in 13 buildings, and 1,260 parking spaces, related streets and utility infrastructure, and subdivision into seven development lots and roads to be dedicated to the town, 3532 North Road, US Route 9 Zone, HRDD Historic Revitalization Development District, 156.19 acres is a Type 1 Action EFG DRA Heritage LLC owner. Since this is the only item on the agenda and this is not a public hearing, there will be public hearings in the future as this project moves down, down the road. However, in tradition is what we do is we will allow public comment up to three minutes on any, any agenda items. This being the only agenda item, the public is allowed to speak, the planning board will not respond, uh, we will not make any comments, uh, and, um, your comments will be, will be, you know, listened to, okay? So if anyone would like to, um, um, move that we allow public comment on the agenda items?
Second?
We moved in second, the call to question, those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries five to zero. Does anyone wish to comment on this, uh, item? This is your only opportunity at this point, but again, it's not a public hearing. Public hearings will be in the future and there will be many of them, okay? Just so you know. So we're limiting it to three minutes. Yes, sir. John?
Guys, if you would, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's John Penn, I'm the Town Historian, also the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission for the Town. I, I just wanted to, uh, thank the board for the opportunity to speak before them. Uh, we are, you know, as you know, we've spoken before about this project and, uh, are in favor of developing it. We have never had, um, an adverse relationship with, uh, the people that are trying to develop at the division. They've been very, very good diversified. I've worked with George. Uh, but I wanted to share with you, uh, some concerns. Uh, since the fire, the most recent fire, and I know that they addressed some of this in the, uh, response to the questions, uh, we, as the commission, have a concern about, um, the building, leaving the building open. I know in question two, they keep referring back to question two, uh, as response to this, that, uh, increased rain and open to the air will not damage the building any further. Uh, common sense says to me that if I go out in the rain without an umbrella and I don't wear a raincoat, uh, I'm gonna get wet and maybe sick. Uh, if we leave the building uncared for, the more rain, the more open, uh, the more it's open to the, uh, elements, there's gotta be more damage to the building. Uh, yes, there was damage because of the fire and because of putting out the fire. However, um, we should think about what we can do, especially in the 21st century, uh, with all the technology we have, uh, to try to retain the building and its integrity as much as we possibly can, especially for future reuse. Uh, also, when you look at number two, their response to number two here, uh, there are some contradictory statements in there that, uh, they talk about the intrusion of the water, that the building has extensive damage. No one has seen any reports yet. Uh, we haven't heard of any. Uh, there's been no fire report yet that we are aware of. Uh, there's been no engineer's report or structural, uh, damage report. Uh, so we're concerned about that and hope that the board would, uh, be able to acquire those and also enlighten the, uh, commission, uh, 'cause we would like to have that information and, and the efforts of supporting, of supporting the project, uh, not to be adversarial. We just wanna make sure that, uh, the project can go on. The, um, the other concern that we had, uh, was just, uh, the safety of the building in terms of securing it. Uh, I know that, you know, George and I have talked about this many times and they've done a lot to secure that building and we know how difficult it is because of, uh, the location and the nighttime, uh, you know, the evenings. Uh, but now that we've had another intrusion and we've had a fire there, the last thing we would wanna see as a commission is that the building, uh, is forced to be demolished because of, uh, lack of security or, uh, because of neglect to the building itself. Our history is very important, ladies and gentlemen. Um, we don't, you know, we have a lot of history in Town of Poughkeepsie. Uh, we haven't had a big effort in preserving that history, but we are making that effort and, and the board, the town board has been very, very supportive and you folks have been very supportive. And we'd like to, this is a site that has multiple historic value and, uh, taking this building, particularly the main building, the Gilbright Building, and doing all we can to preserve it and to reuse it is critical, I think, for our history. History does bring in people to a town. It has economic value to the town and it's important that we do all we can to, uh, you know, keep the building available for the future. Last but not least, I'd like to submit to you, um, a document that I gave to George when I had a meeting with him four years ago, uh, about, an over, uh, an overview about the site. If we're gonna just build another commercial spot and more apartments like everyone else, why would anyone wanna come to it? I can go anywhere, but if we make this a site that people are interested, uh, to come to and we make it someplace that's unique, then we're gonna have people staying there, businesses will stay there. It has to be different. It can't be the same old, same old. And, uh, George and I have talked about this a lot and he's talked about making that happen, uh, you know, the company making that happen. Uh, I encourage you to please look at this as not just a development site, but a place that people are gonna wanna come to for the future and make it unique. Don't just make it humdrum, uh, like every place else. Uh, I'd like to submit that one document to everyone if you don't mind and, uh, with that, I thank you for all your help.
Thank you, John. It should become a destination.
Yes, it should be a destination.
Right. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Yes?
Just a quick question. I know you said this is not a public hearing, but-
Correct.
-our, uh, comments, will they be responded to in any way? No, okay. All right, that's fine.
Because of the nature of this meeting.
That's fine, I totally understand. Uh, my name is Stephanie Lewison. I am someone who grew up in the Town of Poughkeepsie, so I just have some interest and I've looked through the, um, whatever the acronym is for the new document, DMP?
DMP.
Yeah, okay. And I just had a couple of, of questions.
And you live in La Grange?
I do live in La Grange.
I remember that from last week.
You remember that from last time?
You told us for last week.
That's okay. It's only been two years. I'm, I'm barely outside of Poughkeepsie, it's fine.
DMP means the Development Master Plan that the town board approved.
Right, right. I just couldn't remember, I just barely remembered the acronym. Um, one thing I did wanna echo that, um, John had mentioned was the, um, response to question number two, discuss the fact that tarps would not necessarily be a feasible alternative, but I was wondering, like John was sort of alluding to, if there's other technologies or other ways of securing the building, perhaps plywood, something that wouldn't rustle and be pulled away in the wind or be weighed down by, um, rain as some other means of protecting the structure.
I think they'll be discussing a little bit tonight.
Yeah, okay. I'll be excited to hear that. Um, going back to the document itself, page 48 discusses irreversible and irretrievable, um, commitment of resources. I just had a thought of wondering, with a historic perspective in mind, whether or not, um, a loss of historic buildings should be listed as such a resource. Um, on page 50 to 52, it discusses significant impacts that cannot be avoided, um, and says demolition of existing HRPC buildings. Again, putting on the historic hat, I was wondering if they should maybe say demolition of existing historic HRPC buildings, even if they're not designated, they still are over 50 years old, considered historic buildings. Um, and then maybe that should also mention, except for the six, um, buildings that are being proposed for being kept. Um, Appendix A, Section 16 discusses historic and cultural resources. Um, that section does not specify which buildings will be retained and reused. Um, another thought that I had, I think, brought up really long time ago and not really brought up since then was whether or not there's been any kind of tree survey of the existing sycamore trees. Talk about something that makes the site unique is the gigantic sycamore trees that are around. I know the road sort of looks like it follows, um, the existing road and I was just wondering if there's any potential that any of those trees can be retained, um, to keep that, um, nature of the environment. And then, just one thing that I thought of while John was talking, and I don't wanna in any way take away from the importance of retaining the Kirkbright Building, but just a consideration of, wonder if there's any other buildings on that north lot or north section of the property that maybe could be retained to kind of keep more of that historic nature if, God forbid, something were to happen. I, again, don't wanna take away from the Kirkbright Building being retained, but maybe some of the other buildings, even, even the power plant for all I know, I mean, that's pretty spectacular looking building, something that could maybe draw people's interest. Um, so maybe consider trying to retain some other buildings in addition to the ones at the moment. And those are my comments. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. I'm sure they're all looking forward to the public hearings, you'll be back.
John, does anybody else need a copy?
Do you have enough copies?
I could use one or two more.
Yeah.
For the file.
Okay, Anne?
Let me just take mine, if you need it. I was gonna keep mine. Thanks. Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Anne Schurshun, Sixth Ward Town Councilperson. You know, the town has suffered some recent losses of our historical buildings. Kopolas, which was a Westerveld House in a stagecoach stop and, uh, um, a ferry stop too, was taken down because it was too badly cannibalized to be deemed historical. And then also Frank Farms, the barn was taken down and even though they said they were gonna save the little, um, horse barn next to it, that was also, the stables were also taken down. And soon, we're probably gonna see the Arthur S. May School come down too. We've suffered some significant losses and this speaks to what, who we are. It's not only historical, but also gives us character, it makes us interesting. It speaks to who we are. So that's why it's really important that the administration building be incorporated into the new plan for this site. And, okay, speaking to that, we really would love to see an engineering report as to what's left there and what state it is currently, what's left there, and plans to stabilize it. Also, I'd love to see a report on the fire. Where's the status of the investigation? Where was it set? Do we have any idea who set it? Now, we had a Historic Preservation Commission meeting and that Marty called into. He said the current plan is that the administration building will be incorporated into a hotel as much as possible and that there wasn't any plans to do anything to stabilize it until a hotel was selected and a timetable as to when that was gonna happen. That makes perfect sense. We don't wanna see a lot of money spent to put an elaborate roof or whatever on it. Within three months, you're gonna start renovating it for a hotel. That makes perfect economic sense. But, when is this hotel chain gonna be selected or the, the person who's gonna be doing it selected? Therefore, we need to have a definite deadline, that if somebody isn't designated with, found within six months, nine months, stabilization of the building has to begin. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Anne. I'm glad you came.
She does a good job.
Okay. Is it okay to say, Jay? Okay. Uh, anyone else? No? Okay, I make a, I move to resume the rules here?
Second.
All the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries five to zero. Uh, okay.
Uh, I'd like to just take a moment, a, a quick break to invite, uh, Jay up to say a few words since this is, uh, John Weisman's last, he is chairman.
John, as you know-
You are-
Me, I am me, nobody's special, so I'm gonna say goodbye.
No, you are special.
Those are my words, John, goodbye. No. We have a proclamation from the town here, which I'm not gonna read. It's for you, you can take it home, put it in your file. I wanted to put it where I put your resignation, but you wouldn't be able to read it if I put it in the same place. So, I wanna thank you, John. You've been on this board and the chairman of the board as long as I've been on the town board. We've always worked very well together. Yeah, I think you've run probably one of the best boards I've ever seen as far as keeping the demeanor of the board, treating everybody fair and equal. It's been great and you've been a great mentor to, I think, everybody on the board, whether employees or board members. You've been fantastic. Not a fan of where you're moving down south, but that's your choice, you know? You have waves, I don't, you know? But, you know, John, we really wanna thank you because what you've done, the projects we've worked on, whether we agreed or disagreed, we always walked out with an agreement. You know, you've called it issues that you had, we've addressed, and issues we didn't agree on, we still addressed, and we, 99% of the time, came to an equal ground. So with that, I wanna really thank you for all you've done. I'm gonna give you this proclamation, John, do what you want with it. Put it in the drawer, I don't anticipate you're gonna hang it on the wall anywhere. You know, and it did take you till the end of your career to get your award, you know, this year, but congratulate you on that too. But some people, you know, being as good as you are, you're not in the front lines of the paper, sometimes takes a long time to be noticed, but you've done a great job and working with you has been good. But we do have something from the supervisor's office for you to take when you go down south and you can't hang this on the wall though.
Wow, thank you. Thank you, Jay. Jay, shake his hand again so I can take a photo of him. When I, when I gave Jay my resignation, I asked him if he accepted it and he, all he said was, "I put it in the shredder." But I won't put this in the shredder, thank you. Can I open this later, is that all right?
What's in the bag?
Oh, all right. I don't know. Ticking? Well, it's packed real well. Ooh, from the back, it looks like it might tick.
In a good way.
Oh, wow. Thank, thank you very much. Thanks, everyone. And I do, I actually do collect clocks. Oh, wow.
You can see the parts in that one.
There's the engineer. I can see the parts in it.
Sorry.
Okay, anyway, so who would like to?
Sure, I'll just, um, just, uh, set the stage about what we're going to be talking about tonight. So we, uh, are still working on the conformance, uh, questions, right, related to the development master plan and the revised development master plan. Um, and so we wanted to have this meeting tonight to talk about some of the key issues that we've identified, uh, at our previous, uh, meetings. So I know that historic preservation and, uh, traffic issues were going to be, uh, among those. I also wanted to point out that, um, the applicant has submitted a, some revisions to the site plan that are, um, you know, important to at least understand so that, in, in the sense that they have something to do with conformance with the development master plan, that we, um, that we, you know, have a good understanding of those. And so we asked them to also, um, you know, give us a little presentation on that so we can make sure that everyone's on the same page about what those changes are. Um, Dave, I don't know if you had anything else that, uh-
Uh, no, for those of you who haven't met me, I'm David Cooper from Law Firm Zarenstein Metz, I'm your special counsel, uh, on this matter. Um, procedurally, what we're looking at is, is the, the threshold issue here, which is really presented to this board, as to whether or not, um, the, the modifications proposed to the development master plan are materially consistent with the intent of, uh, what was adopted not that long ago by the town board. Tonight, I think we've identified sort of the three main, main issues that we think really, uh, all of the board and based on public comment to date and consultant comments to date, really kind of drive that question. Um, there is a, a full-blown report before you already, uh, that the applicant has, has submitted and then, and then has revised based on some comments, going through point by point of consistency, what, you know, if there is any change from what was approved, uh, what's the magnitude of that change and why they believe it's still consistent. Um, based on, on, on that review, we, we've identified these three major issues, not major, but the three main issues to, to, um, to review, one being adaptive reuse of, uh, historic buildings, most, mostly the administration building because of, of the fire. Uh, there were some traffic, um, uh, questions. I know that Anthony Russo is here tonight from AKRF, who is your, uh, traffic consultant, uh, and I know they've been working on it offline, but we'll hear a presentation, uh, as well as some of the modifications to some of the design, uh, in terms of the, uh, uh, walkway, I'm sorry, the, the main driveway and some of the, the parking areas. Um, we, since those, those were identified, uh, in the last couple of weeks, we thought it would also be worthwhile for the board to, to, to see them and, and discuss them as well. So, um, with that, unless you have anything else to turn it over to?
I was just, Dave, if you guys wanna, yeah?
And I'll go, I'll just add to that, that, um, that this special meeting, the, uh, this meeting was scheduled in order for the applicant, Sabre Development, to discuss with the planning board the, this, the condition of and potential redevelopment options for the historical designated buildings, traffic issues and other aspects for the proposed, uh, revised development master plan. Um, the applicant's historic preservation and traffic consultants and the planning board's consultants are expected to be at the meeting, which they are. Okay, so that's the purpose of the meeting. Uh, there'll be no action taken, as I said, by the planning board and a little bit go around the board and ask questions, probably in a, uh, freestyle type of, uh, environment instead of going one person to the other and everything is fair game to ask. And obviously, the question from the, from the, uh, people that spoke, uh, is, centers around the administration building, as you, no, and, and I'm sure you're gonna comment on its condition and those types of things. So with that, Marty, it's all yours.
Hello, this is, let's, thank you.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Marty Berger with Sabre Real Estate Advisors, the development partner for the project. Um, and I agree with John that, uh, this can't be just an ordinary project. This, uh, has been talked about for, for 10, 15-plus years and, uh, if it came up as an ordinary project, whether it be residential or retail or office, I think it would be highly unsuccessful. It certainly wouldn't be something that our company is interested in, in doing. Uh, we, we went out and, as you know, took advantage of the, uh, two major anchors in the neighborhood, which are the education and the, and the, and the medical community and asking their needs of what they feel is important and what's necessary. We put together what we believe, as I say here, a dynamic live workshop health, uh, environment, something that's intergenerational, that can service the, uh, the young teens and college students, the staff, professors, the people in the community, as well as 55 and older, to take advantage of the, the, uh, facilities at Marist, the health, uh, and care that Health Quest and others provide in the area. So, uh, I, I think that we've done an outstanding job of creating a true, um, development that is very unique, that people want to come to. It's evidenced by the fact that at this point in time, we have over 150,000 square feet of committed and/or highly interested letters of intents, uh, on the table, which defines the fact that it's highly unique and desirable. Uh, if it was just retail, as an example, it wouldn't happen, but because of the synergies we've created, it, it achieves it so well. Um, as, um, Anne said, we did have a call last week with, uh, myself and Joe Kenton from my office and, and John and Yvonne, and I think Anne was on a call addressing the, the, um, administration building. So we haven't changed from the approval that was provided in the resolution. We are committed to doing exactly what the document and the approval states. And we went into, uh, the details of that with, with the, with the Historical Association. Also, in addition, there was a concern about security and, uh, we do have, uh, 24-hour, uh, uh, security. We have Town of Poughkeepsie Police, we have our own people on site. At the request and suggestion of the, uh, Historical Association, we have made arrangements to floodlight the administration building. Everything was brought on site last week, I think it's energized and lights will be up, uh, today, are they up? And the next, if not today, the next day or two, the main administration building will be fully lit and there's some additional fencing, et cetera, that, uh, will, will, will go on. So we have a presentation to talk about the issues that we've, um, that have been identified that you've asked us to focus in on following our work session and it really pertain to the, um, the changes on the site, which is the residential along the, um, the main road, the retail building along the southwest corridor, and, um, the traffic and also, of course, the, uh, administration building. But since we're talking about that, let me jump to the end of the presentation and deal with the administration building. Up front. So, with me tonight is Mark Schulman, who's an architect that specializes in, amongst other things, um, readap, adaptive reuse as well as, uh, Kirkbright Buildings, which he's working on now. Um, this is a drone photo that was taken and what I'll try to do is just explain in a layman's developer's perspective, how the stability, how the structure is, is being able to stay stable and why the best thing we've concluded with our professionals is to do nothing at this time. And then I'll turn it over to Mark to give you the, uh, the technical and, and, and architectural explanation. So as a result of the various, uh, again, our commitment is to reuse the building. To the extent possible, we, we plan to reuse the building as a hotel. The building is not big enough to be a hotel and therefore it'll be incorporated into a hotel. The building itself only has above-grade square footage of maybe 20, 30, 40,000 square feet. The hotel has to be over 150,000 square feet in totality. So while it can be a portion of a hotel, or in Marybie it could be a 10, 15-room boutique hotel, it can't be a hotel that satisfies the needs of, uh, Marist and other, uh, people in the community. Having said that, the, this is a drone photo that was taken, uh, a few weeks ago at the request of, uh, our engineer to reconfirm his, uh, decision to do nothing at this time. And what it basically shows, uh, if you look at it in detail, and like, I have handouts I can provide, I should, you can look at it closer up. It basically shows that the roof has collapsed as a result of a fire and, and, and fell into the existing structure. But more importantly, what it shows is that the floors are intact. These are concrete floors, anywhere from 12 to 18 inches, uh, deep. And what the floors do, the third floor, the second floor and the first floor, is basically provide bracing or stability for the structural walls that they tie into. In reusing the building, code requires that we take out all of the wood timbers and basically gut everything that's in the interior. So in essence, we don't care if everything in the interior gets wet. It's not going to be used anyway, it can't by code, but we, we're concerned that the exterior structure can be reused and incorporated into the hotel. So the question is how to best preserve the structure of the hotel. And of course, um, at, at first, we talked about tarping portions of all of the roof build, with the roof, thinking that the right thing to do was to prevent water from coming in. So when we explored that with our construction, uh, personnel and our outside engineers and architects, their answer was, basically, that's a terrible idea because you cannot get an entire, one roof that would span the entire building plus hang over the building so rain and snow would come over it. And even if you did, or if you put tarps up there, it's gonna collect rain and wind, it's rain and snow, which is going to create a significant weight or load. And that weight and load on portions of the building that have been there for 50, 60, 70, 100 years, that haven't had this weight or load is going to be extremely detrimental. Moreover, it's gonna act like a hat in the wind or an umbrella in the wind. It'll simply be lifted off and in doing so, it'll pull up a good portion of the building structure that's there today. Whether it's a small tent or a large tent, it'll just rip the structure if it's properly put up. So, the- So the recommendation was, after looking, walking through the building with the professionals and our construction people, was that we realized that we have three floors of concrete that are holding the structure in place and together, which give an enormous amount of stability. And as long as those floors remain, obviously are not going to remain in this situation for 10, 15 years, but it's three levels of concrete, there's enough stability there to hopefully allow us to get through the process and get to the building to reuse it. There's enough stability for it to maintain the structural integrity of the administration building. At the same time, the north and south wings are beyond repair, beyond salvage, but I think that we already know that. The building itself, you know, is quite nice. I agree. It's a lovely building, and it would be wonderful to keep the building and to be able to reuse it. Period. The end. There's no issue as far as that. Mark, would you like to add some?
Good evening. My name is Mark Schulman. I'm a partner with Design Development. We're architects based in White Plains, and we have a considerable amount of planning, architecture and interior design work, and our focus is in primarily mixed-use projects. We've worked on many, many historical buildings and a lot of repurposing of those buildings. Just recently, we've completed a project called Voice Thompson in Yonkers, which was a restoration of a historic building. It was dedicated to agricultural sciences way back when, at the turn of the century, and has, was abandoned and has since been converted into medical office, restaurant, retail. Some really great outdoor public spaces associated with that. You know, not terribly dissimilar from this project. We recently completed restoration of a landmark building in Norwalk. It was a theater that had years of, had been abandoned for years, and half the roof was collapsed, and it is now a state-of-the-art theater. And we got historic landmark credits for it. So we've been in a lot of these buildings. We're currently working on another project, Letchworth Village, which is in Stony Point, New York, if anybody's familiar with that. It's dozens of buildings and was an institution for mentally and physically disabled people. Again, back at the turn of the century, the whole idea was founded by a Quaker, and the whole thought was, let's find a different way to deal with the disabled. And actually, the vaccine for polio was actually created there at that location, but had since been abandoned and actually turned out to be a sort of an institutional disaster as funding was eventually eliminated. But like this, there are many buildings that are in decent shape and some buildings that we have to demolish. And like you, the town is very interested in keeping some of these buildings intact. And we're going through a very, the exact same process of trying to figure out how to best repurpose the buildings, how to utilize some of the old buildings and maintain the architecture. And, you know, we very much believe that history is important. It is a draw, there's no question about it, and we're very excited about working with the team on repurposing this. And, you know, I think a hotel would be a wonderful use. It's going to be a challenge, no doubt. And as Marty said, I think, you know, with what we know on the market side, again, based on square footage, you're talking about an expensive repositioning, and you're also talking about a somewhat inefficient building relative to hotel use. As Marty pointed out, you know, 50 to 60 rooms at best, probably at best here, single-loaded is not an efficient plan, but they could be spectacular. And I think, you know, Hudson and Riverviews, there's more going for it than against it. So we're very excited to be on the team and to start working with on how to best reposition this. We did a thorough walkthrough, and we climbed up on this building, and we looked at the structure. We're not structural engineers, but from our own experience, we don't, we think that adding something to this building could be more detrimental. Again, putting concentrated loads, wind loads, high wind loads, there's a lot of wind on this site. You know, you start to, you can start to destruction of masonry component of the building, which is keeping this building intact right now. So we think, again, to reiterate what everybody I think is saying here, let's leave the building alone. But at the same time, you know, time is the enemy here. So it's important to move forward with this project as quickly as possible and get that covered up. I don't know that there's too much more for me to say, Marty.
What would your estimate be to, in terms of timing? How long can it sit in this condition before, you know, the concrete fails or whatever to hold up the walls? I mean, can you give us some kind of a timetable in your estimation?
It's tough to say. I'll tell you that with the project that we just did in Norwalk, we had partially open roof. That building had been that way for five years. And we saw, we started to see damage. There were damage to the balconies, no damage to the structure of the building. And this was a single-story brick, very similar to the construction on this, and you could put a 10-story building on top of that building. And in fact, by the time we completely repaired the roof, the masonry walls were completely intact, and we put an entire heating cooling system spanning over the entire project on top of the existing masonry wall. I feel this is the same, you know, it's, that's a hard thing for me to estimate. I couldn't give you a real, you know, time limit on that. I just know sooner the better.
So what's there is pretty well-built, is what you're saying?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's built like the proverbial outhouse.
That is correct. They don't build them like that anymore. That's true. And, but, you know, I think everybody needs to move, you know? The sooner the better.
I just had a quick question about, you know, Marty mentioned it's impossible to save anything inside, I guess, from all the damage. I haven't seen it myself. Were there any particular feature, nice features that might be preserved, like a staircase or?
You know, I think when we start to, you know, there's a lot of woodwork in there. I don't know that it can be, that any of that can be preserved. I think there may be some elements of it that could be preserved. I think maybe some pieces of various things that may ultimately be put together, you know? You might get enough parts and pieces of one element that you can put a whole one together and sort of represent what might be there, and maybe it's possible to salvage some of that. I think even without the fire, there's just a lot of moisture that's been in the building, a lot of damage to the building.
It's been sitting for a long?
Yeah, for a long time. But, you know, I think what this building has, more than anything, it's the exterior of the building, it's the volume, the spaces, and it's incredible views. And I think, I think that is the draw here to this building. I don't think it's necessarily any of the furnishings or the elements within the building. But, you know, you can even, you know, is it possible to replicate, you know, some of the tile floor patterns that are there and the colors that? Yes, it is. And some of that is intact, and you can see some of that. And I think that would be our job to try to replicate as much of that as possible. But how much of it's salvageable?
Just wanted to see the Hotel Henry in Buffalo, for example. It's got some of the original tiles, staircases. That's what came to my mind.
Just to add to that, first of all, we did have a structural engineer go through it. Basically, he had the same conclusion as Mark did and our professional team saw it and feel the need to bring him up here. He doesn't live close, but I will have him submit a letter that basically summarizes the same thing. We retained Mark's firm at this time to proceed forward with design drawings of the director's house, which is at the entrance, because we know that we're going to be using that and revitalizing it immediately. We know that we're going to do, put some residential and offices in there or something. So Mark's firm has been released to proceed and do as-built studies on that and to come up with rehabilitation drawings for that so we can reuse that building sooner rather than later. At the same time, he and another gentleman have been released to go through the site and basically salvage from the other buildings what can be salvaged and perhaps reincorporated into some of the new buildings. So we're doing that. But those are architectural treatments or elements from most of the outside of the buildings. And we've also retained Mark to be available as soon as we have a hotel user, to sit down with him, explain what our wishes are and help guide them into, with their design drawings so that we can have a plan that achieves our goal.
Could you, excuse me, could you provide our engineer with a copy of the report that you got from your structural engineer? Not just a letter, but a copy of the report?
Yeah, we'll send in everything.
All right, Andy, so you'll take a look at that.
Sure.
The other thing, in response to a comment that was made earlier about the loss of a resource, a letter we received last month from the Office of Historic Preservation, he was addressing the possible loss of the administration building. And he said thus, "That stated under Section 1409, the demolition of a building listed in the state or national registers of historic places essentially is classified as an adverse impact. As such, this proposal must be categorized as having an adverse impact on historic resources, including the loss of a significant portion of the national historic landmark, much of which now is in ruins." I don't know if we have to adjust the findings as a consequence of that?
Well, much of, much of those findings were already provided to the town board the first time around. In fact, much of the letter that Shippo submitted was actually, not, I don't want to say copy and paste, but they took a lot of their findings from before and incorporated that into that letter. So the SECA record has taken into account the majority of those comments.
This letter was submitted after the findings were accepted by the town board.
Right, but the substance of Shippo's findings with respect to its, the impacts on historic value, much of that was already incorporated into the record at a time.
Thank you, Peter. With regard to this letter, I get the sense from the letter that the historic preservation has, is more or less accepting the concept of the core preservation only. Is that correct? Reason I ask that is they're looking for a letter of resolution be prepared and the following stipulations be considered. Number one is they address the administration building, and in parentheses, it's Building 51, comma, core. Exactly what does that mean? Does that mean that they're basically abandoning the north, south and east wings, or they're just focusing on the core of the building now?
My understanding, I think, I think the applicant can confirm, if not, I'm sure they can confirm before the next meeting, that the Building 51 designation was the entirety of the, of that structure, not just, not just the main administrative building, but the wings. And the core, I think, is referring to what's essentially still standing in the left of that main building. But we certainly can get that, get clarification from.
I think that's an important clarification to have.
But what, is it just the main building? So wings come down?
Just very briefly, Peter Wise, on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Cooper is exactly right. We did study, the administration building is Building 51 in its entirety, including the north and the south wings. SHPO did comment quite extensively in the SECA process that we engaged in before the town board. And the result of that process, after we went through study and consulted Shippo, was a determination that the north and the south wings of the administration building, of Building 51, were not to be preserved, and what was to be preserved was the core. So the reference to the core is, in fact, still accurate.
So core means core?
Yes. Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Guess we got to the core of that.
Can you say something also about, we talked a lot about the administration building, but you are trying to preserve some of the other buildings on the site?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mark's firm has been also engaged to look at all of the other four or five buildings. I think it's five, I think it's a total of six?
Five.
Total of six, there's five others. And we plan to reuse the other buildings as part of the development, particularly as amenities to the residential. We don't know if they'll be private to the homeowners association or public, completely open, but part of Mark's assignment will be to document the as-bills on each of those other buildings and come up, help us come up with suggestions to reuse them and reactivate them. I think reactivating the administration building, the other buildings, is the key of what we'd like to achieve.
Do you have the state of these buildings? And we're talking about the library, the recreational hall, North Tower, Avery Chapel and the director's residence. Do you have any drone images, like right now, of the state of them?
No, I don't. They're in, we went back four, five years ago to the last structural engineering report that was provided to the, to the town that was prepared by Diversified, and basically, they look exactly the same on the exteriors. My knowledge, none of the roofs are, nothing burnt down, there's no material roofs that are open, so I think they're pretty much in the same position as they were.
Okay, thank you.
You want to speak?
Good evening. George Carfanyo with Diversified. After we acquired the site, we went through and did an analysis of the roofs on a lot of the buildings. So we did repair work on the admin building. We did some concrete work and masonry work on the director's house. We repaired the roof on the library, on the entertainment hall. So several of them have had work done on them, and we put the window guards on all of them to prevent break-in. So they've been, not just the condition that they're in when we found them, they've actually been improved to a certain extent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do you mind passing this out? No, I have it in there, so it's okay.
So I'll run through a presentation that has a little bit of duplicity of what we went over before, just as a reminder, and then we can address the issues that you asked us to. We are on our way to creating this development. As I said, we have a good amount of anchor tenant commitments. We are proceeding with construction drawings for the site and off-site. Chazen is working hard, Mazor is working hard, and our internal construction department is working diligently to create all of the site-related drawings. The buildings, the south buildings have been cleared out over the past five or six or eight weeks. There's another couple of weeks of completion. We will then be ready to do the asbestos removal and the demolition of the south buildings. I believe we have a permit for that. And so as long as we're moving forward here and the weather permits, we're going to get started with that as soon as possible. The contract has already been awarded for it. As I said, we're here to respond, we have already responded to comments from the town. We have some modifications that we have made in response to the town's comments. We have a couple tonight to go over. I'll give you a run through it. And Kyle and Stuart are here from Chazen to address the specific questions on the site plan changes. Phil Greeley and his associate is here to discuss, from Mazor Consulting, to discuss the traffic and off-site. And Mark's here to address the administration building, which I think he's already done. The site plan modifications basically make the development much more highly walkable, give a town center, which was desirable, create a main street approach with wide sidewalks, with buildings that are unique to each other, gives it a look and feel that matches the town's policies, and we think is quite, being receptive quite well by the retailers, as well as the multifamily, 55 and older, and medical office users that we're in touch with. We specifically made a change along the residential, to the residential buildings that follow the main road on the right-hand side of the great lawn. The original plan is shown here on the right side, and the revised plan is shown on the left side. And the basic difference is, is that the buildings were shifted away from the great lawn. The reason that they would done that is because of the topographical change in grade. When the plan was originally proposed as drawn on the right-hand side, it was done When the plan was originally proposed as drawn on the right-hand side, it was done so without the full benefit of true topographical grades. And in reality, there's a significant falloff between the great lawn on the left and then the, where the commercial is on the right. This drawing that Kyle prepared shows a person standing in the, on the great lawn, and then as you move to the right, it shows that the grade profile goes up quite significantly to the road. And then when you get to the other side of the road, it falls quite significantly off. And then you have the residential building, and then it quite, it continues to fall off quite dramatically. In the original plan, on the right-hand side, it basically necessitated the buildings to be built at the same time as the road was constructed. And again, Kyle can go into greater detail as you'd like. But in essence, what we tried to do is try to separate it so that the road could be built initially right up front, and then the buildings could be built when, when they're ready to be built. In addition to that, the site plan on the right-hand side did not have an adequate amount of parking provided, and it also required all of the residents to enter the rear of the building. By shifting it away from the road slightly, we're able to accomplish parking on both sides of the building, as well as to create entrances to both sides of the buildings. A view of what that looks like translates to this, where you can see on the left-hand side, the walkway, where there's a bicyclist there. And then to the left of that, you can see behind a tree, is that the elevation goes up as you go north into the great lawn. And then as you're coming across the, the main road, you have landscaping and a berm of hedges, which are four feet approximately high and, and thick, that will prevent headlights from coming in, or unsight, or the sightlines to the parking areas, et cetera. So, we created a significant amount of privacy. So, that was one modification that we made, and, and per your request, we provided this, these, these drawings and renderings.
Yeah, thank, thank you for doing that, by the way, because that enabled people to see what you were talking, we talked about it last week, but now you can actually visualize what's going on, so.
Yeah, I think that by having the, this cross-section, and the rendering that shows it, along with how we would propose to treat the right-hand side of the road, hopefully addresses the concerns or questions that you have.
Just quickly, I remember that Kyle explained the scale of the profile that you had. Just, you might want to explain that for the public's information.
Right, so just, just keep in mind, you can actually see the cars, they look very squished. That's just because the horizontal scale is at a five-to-one ratio with the vertical scale. And we, we did that to kind of exaggerate the grade changes, to give a better idea of those grade changes. Instead of the one-to-one scale, it would look a lot flatter, and be a lot less difficult, or more difficult to, to understand those grade changes. And just kind of to elaborate on what Marty was saying with the buildability of those buildings. So, he was saying that it would have to be built at the same time as the road, and the reason for that is that, based on the topography of the, the land downhill from the road, in order to utilize that existing topography, there's a basement level with garage parking underneath the buildings. So, that building needs a foundation. That's pretty, you know, pretty deep. We're talking 15-plus feet to get the full foundation and the, the ceiling height in there. So, if you're building that right against the road, you wouldn't be able to excavate without disturbing the roadway if you come in at, at a later date to build those buildings. So, by moving it back, it also gave us space to give the, the additional parking, you know, that, that number of units, you know, we'd need.
So, the, the other comment or discussion point that we had was to create, in addition to walkway paths, and I have a plan that shows all of the walkability paths, as well as the landscaping, but in order, in addition to the sidewalk that goes from the administration building all the way down through the retail, through the town square to the south exit or entrance, we created some breaks between the building. Basically, what we did was, we added a couple of walking paths, so that if you're in the administration building, and you turn left, you can walk behind the first residential building and have a walking path to the retail town square. And then as you go down the main road on the sidewalk, you have two opportunities to cross the road and then get to areas of the commercial development. The first one will necessitate some steps between the two residential buildings. That's correct, yes. But there's a walking path there that'll take you down toward the retail, connect. And then a little bit further south is the main walkway path. So, at your suggestion, we did think that was a good idea, and we added those two westerly walking paths. Again, this is a prior image that you saw of the main street walkable, that has wide sidewalks for outdoor seating and cafe and bicycling. It has some traffic on it. When I say some, meaning it's not a primary road, it's not a primary exit or entrance to the supermarket behind it, but there is a, two cut-throughs that connect the supermarket in with one-way traffic, so that it'll be energized with some traffic. We, the, the second modification that we made to the site plan involves the building on the southwest corner, which is the bottom-right building. That was one building of approximately 4,000 square feet, and at the, at the request of some tenant interest that we have, we broke the building into two and, and accomplished two drive-throughs. So, for example, if it's a coffee shop and a bank, both of them would be able to utilize the drive-through in this configuration. It meets the parking requirements and so on and so forth. And it's modeled after the King of Prussia. So, our site plan is on the right-hand side as proposed. On the left-hand side is a site plan in the actual photo of a Starbucks and bank building that's at, coincidentally, the south entrance of King of Prussia. In the bottom plan, it's the top-right corner that's in the red marking. And that is the picture of what's there above. It's basically a coffee shop and a bank, and they each operate one lane of a drive-through, and it, and it works out quite nicely. So, knowing the tenant interests that we're having, we proposed to this modification to, to that building. We focused a little bit at, at our last session with walking paths, and what this shows is the walking path in, I guess it's light purple, that shows the connectivity to the, the shopping center to the right, which is access, which is connected to Maris College, the sidewalk along, the, the, the cross-street entrance, and then the two paths, the one heading west and the one heading north. And the one heading north will have several cut-ups, so you'll have several locations to go. As you're heading north on the walking path, you'll be able to go west into various areas of the retail. And I think I have a larger, here, this is a larger plan that shows the various, the various walking paths that we've created. A close-up examination will probably be better than what I'm showing here, but basically there's sidewalks that are landscaped, connecting all of the components of the, of the village to Route 9 and to points south, where most people will be walking from. So, we, material consistency, all proposed land uses are permitted under the amended zoning. The traffic generation requires no new improvements. We have no change in the residential units or the square footage, and no changes to the intention of the administration, administrative building. Just one last change that we contemplate bringing, coming back at some point in the future, pertains to the road location from the main ring road, if you will, back to, back to the westerly end of the property. The, the image on the left is the old, am I correct? That's, correct? Yes.
They're both the new, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry, they're both the new. Pardon me. So, they're both new. One's a close-up. The, the roadway that connects the, the main road to the westerly exit of the property, in the application that was provided, as well as the original application, separated the administration building from the land adjacent to the north of it. So, knowing that we need to grow the administration building to accommodate a hotel to meet the demands of the neighborhood, we shifted the road to the right, so now it's between where the Arts and Education Center and the administration building will be. It's a very minor change that's shown both here on the left in full-scale, in full-site plan, and then to the right. And this is not something that we're, we've provided, but we know that we're planning on it. And again, the primary purpose is to ensure that the administration building could be utilized with the land to the north to be of, of adequate size, et cetera.
Is that Paint Shop Road?
Yes, the extension of it, yeah.
Okay.
The, I'd like to bring Phil Mazur up to discuss the traffic at this point in time and address the questions, unless you'd like to ask me any questions about anything that we've gone over so far?
Anybody, anybody want to ask?
Sure.
Andy, anything?
I can wait till it.
If it's the traffic. I can wait. All right. Hi, Phil.
Good evening.
Philip Greeley, Mazur Consulting. We prepared the traffic studies for the original plans and the updates. The way that the mitigation or roadway traffic improvements were outlined in the previous findings statements, broke the improvements down into different phases or occupancy or traffic generation of the project. So, what we did in this latest plan was to look at the, the mix of uses and the specific uses as proposed, to see how that traffic generation would compare to the previous. What we found was that the mix of uses now does generate more traffic during the AMP hour than what was previously analyzed. During the PMP hour, about the same, not drastically different. And on Saturday, less traffic than what was originally envisioned. In terms of the traffic improvements that were identified and proposed and listed in detail in the findings, those improvements were primarily based upon the operations during the weekday PMP hour, as the critical time period what we were designing for. The improvements primarily along the Route 9 corridor, along Route 9G at the various intersections are spelled out. And the way that they were initial, initially broken down was by a certain percentage of development. At 25% of traffic generation, what would be needed, what would be needed at 50%, and then at full occupancy of the development. Some of those locations that were identified were for potential new traffic signals, some of which were identified at the end of the development, some that were identified early on. So, for example, the intersection of Fulton Street and Route 9G has been something that has been talked about as a location that potentially would need signalization sooner. So, part of the initial plans for improvements, that's included. And we also have to include fire preemption devices there based on the fire district. But that's an intersection that was identified and would be signaledized right up front. There are other intersections that were identified that would be, continue to be monitored as the development takes place, to see if they actually satisfy the warrants for signalization. As part of the initial development plan, the relocated Hudson View Drive is going to be fully built out. We're building out the Winslow Gate intersection, re-signaling that right in the early stage of, of the project. As part of the traffic updates, and I think your consultant has reviewed those, and we're actually in the process of working through permitting with New York State DOT, and we've received some very detailed comments from them on the nuts and bolts in terms of sidewalks and ADA compliance and signal phasing, et cetera, are being incorporated into those final plans. Basically, the, the schedule of improvements is the same as what we had before, in terms of what will be done on day one. There's a chart that breaks that down in the original documents. And not only are the road improvements, the Hudson View Drive improvements, we've also been coordinating those with the access to Quiet Cove Park. We've been working with the county. What is now the northerly access point will become both an entrance and an exit from the park, which will be under the signal control at the Hudson View Drive intersection. One of the other things that New York State DOT has required is that the signals along Route 9, in terms of traffic coordination, we have to install what's called adaptive traffic signals. So, that will be incorporated into that corridor. And that includes all the way from Hudson View down past Fulton Street as part of the permit with them. So, I guess in, in terms of the original plan and the current plan, the improvements are the same improvements, because everything that was being designed was focused on the critical time period, which was the PMP hour, which from a traffic generation standpoint doesn't really vary under the new plan. One of the other requirements is, and this was worked out with DOT back when the findings were done last year, was that we would have a monitoring program. So, in this case, the monitoring program covers two areas. It's actual traffic volumes at the access points to the project, so we know what's coming in, what's going out, different times of the day. Part of that is almost automatic because of the type of actuation that we're putting in for the access roads, where it's real-time data. There's also turning movement counts that we're required to do after certain levels of occupancy, to make sure that the program is matching what our projections are. And then the other part of the monitoring is for some of the off-site intersections that are out there as potential for signalization, to see if the actual volumes occurring there would satisfy the warrants. So, all of these details were spelled out in the original findings, and we're still following that in terms of the current plan. So, I mean, I can answer any questions, but we're, we're well along. I think your app, your consultant has reviewed the application. We were provided a copy of the comments, and I think those are pretty straightforward in terms of our perspective.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
First, I'd like to compliment your engineer. I think you did a terrific job with this document.
Thank you.
Makes it very, very easy to follow. You answered one of my questions, and that is, you know, the, the State DOT has expressed concern on several different occasions about the timing of the improvements, the signalization of the intersections.
Yes.
We just did a project where we did it a little bit differently, where we tied the, the improvements, the signalization, to actual construction checkmarks. But, you know, I think that's something we want to take a look at. I don't know if it's something you want to keep in the back of your mind, but... But one of the questions that I had in that regard was with, you know, you're basing the, the additional improvements on increased activity, basically.
Correct.
You're saying that you're going to institute a monitoring program.
Yes.
So I'm going to ask our consultant just to get together with you to determine whether or not that monitoring program is something that's, that's doable or it's sensible for us to pursue.
Yeah.
I have to answer it right now.
Yeah. I think in terms of that monitoring program, we will be providing an outline of the specific in, items that will be part of that monitoring program, give it, giving that to New York State DOT as well as to the town so that your consultant can review it and weigh in on it also.
As long as the DOT, I think, is on board. Well, another thing I had with, with, comes up with regard to monitoring was in the crosswalk to Quiet Cove Park.
Yes.
Basically, your, your approach is not to construct a pedestrian-activated signal until you make a determination whether or not there's enough activity there to support it.
Well, we, just to give you kind of an update on where we are with the county and with New York State DOT, that will be fully pedestrian-actuated in terms of the ability. Part of the discussion was whether or not that would come in, in the immediate phase of the project. The current position is that once that signal is installed, it would have a full pedestrian actuation as part of the installation.
Okay. So you'll amend that somewhere just so that, to make that clear. Okay.
Pardon me, can I just, may I just address your, your comment? The improvements that are committed are different than the monitoring. Everything that Phil, that's set forth in the, the report that's being listed as an improvement, that's being implemented. The monitoring is to see if there's anything further down the line.
I understand.
The improvements that are committed are tied to occupancy, which is the same thing as being tied to construction because if you build it, you have to assume it's occupied. And prior to that piece of construction being opened.
Not necessarily, not necessarily. I mean, we had a project recently where we don't issue, we waited, we tied it to the issuance of a building permit when the building was fully, I think, fully occupied, like 95 units had to be occupied and then put down.
Okay. In our mind, it's when the building is built. So when that's, we're on the same page in terms of that because we're not going to wait to find out that, you know, it's occupied and we need the improvement. That's not going to make sense. So when we pull a permit for X amount, that goes over, we're going to do that. So the last point I wanted to make is, just to clarify, notwithstanding the schedule, we're doubling the amount of work day one. So we're going to be doing 50% of the total improvements initially when the occupancy could be as low as 25%. We're doing that because we believe that that's what our tenants and users will be needing. So that's how we're planning on proceeding with construction of the offsite improvements.
That's why words are important.
Thank you. The other, the other purpose of the monitoring program was to.
Did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, you have my comment letter dated today. As Phil said, we met, I met with Phil last week and we had a conference call as well last week. And to the monitoring, to your point, they'll be monitoring at the driveways, they'll be monitoring at offsite locations, they'll be monitoring internally as well. And the one, one comment that we had, and I discussed it with Phil and they're perfectly fine with it, is that before they do any monitoring, they prepare a scope of work that will be reviewed by the town and DOT to make certain everybody's on board with where the monitoring is, what the monitoring is going to accomplish, when they're going to collect the data. So once we're on board with that, they can go out and do the monitoring. We'll review the report with DOT to see what the results are and to see if any additional mitigation or tinkering from what was previously identified needs to change. So we're going to be working closely with DOT on the monitoring and with the applicant to make certain that it's being done the way to satisfy both the town and DOT.
Okay. So there will be mechanism in place?
Yes, absolutely.
How long does the monitoring go on after, post, post-construction?
Well, it depends. I, I think the first monitoring, Phil, you said about six months after it's in operation.
Correct. Well, the other port, the other reason for the monitoring, because the way the improvements are broken down by phases or a percentage, by, let's say, having the monitoring after 50% of the development is done, if there was something that was identified that was going to occur at the 75% level or not until at full occupancy, that we, at the monitoring at 50 shows that something had to be moved up, that's the other purpose of the monitoring is to give us that flexibility to move something up maybe sooner in the process. And then also internally, there's certain intersections internal to the project where there may be a need for signalizing, you know, one of the main intersections within the project. That would be part of what would come out of the monitoring.
And the type of technology that's going to be put in at the driveways, there'll be continuous traffic data available to the town and to DOT to see what type of traffic is being generated. And I think when you get to offsite monitoring, you know, we could discuss that with Phil, he'll come up with a program, you know, but at minimum you would want, you know, automatic traffic recorders out probably for a week. You would want turning movement counts during the weekday peaks and Saturday peak, and you would want to know when it's being done so town or DOT reps can go out and make some observations during that time. So we'll get a very detailed scope of work about what's included and for how long.
If you did internal signalization, who would be responsible for maintaining those signals?
Well, if the signal was required, we would have to install the signal. Typically, that would be worked out if, if they're not, if it's a dedicated street, there would be some type of an arrangement with the town for maintaining it, providing power. I don't know if those details have been worked out, but that would be spelled forth in the monitoring.
That's where the devil is.
Well, it would be, it would be spelled out in the monitoring program, you know.
Yeah, okay. One last.
They have to pay a maintenance fee to the, if it's in a town road, they may have to pay a yearly maintenance fee.
Correct.
So the town could maintain the traffic signal and power the traffic.
Long as we know.
Yes, absolutely.
So we better plan ahead.
Yep.
The other thing is at some point you have to sort out with our consultant about the pass-by credits. Apparently, there's some question.
Well, part of that will come out of the monitoring program, okay, to see what actual occurs in terms of internal trips versus new trips to the roadway and the pass-by. The actual counts of the access drives connecting to Route 9, for example, they'll tell you what the generation is in and out of the site. Part of the monitoring would also be to get concurrent data on Route 9 so that you know how that has changed. So I think that's part of the whole monitoring program.
Correct. Thank you. Before we get too, too far off the subject, can I, can we just clarify which roads are being dedicated or proposed to be dedicated to the town?
I think that's Hudson View Drive and Winslow Gate Road. Is that correct?
And Paint Shop Road, yes.
Yeah.
And Paint Shop. Okay. So that has, right? Okay.
As far as the traffic is concerned, I recall last week, I thought we said on the west side of Route 9, there's going to be a fence along the road to prevent people from crossing where they shouldn't. Correct me if I'm wrong. Was that part of the discussion, a concern about jaywalking in areas that are not safe? Because it begs the question of people walking up the west side and then cutting across and trying to get to this, this project. And then with the width of Route 9 creating a very unsafe condition. And I just am afraid, I don't want to go back to what was there for Marist for so many years at Fulton Street and.
Correct.
Later, further south, when they put those lights in the road that didn't work and all that stuff. We can't afford to go backwards. That's, that's what I'm going to say.
Part of the discussions with DOT and the way the plan is worked at now, and I'll just use a, a section there, at Marist North is where DOT would like the crossing to occur. So for example, at Winslow Gate, they don't want a crossing of Route 9 at Winslow Gate. So there would be some type of fencing north of there, and, and the direction would be to get the pedestrians to cross at Marist North driveway over towards the Home Depot and use the sidewalk to get to Winslow Gate into the project at that end. So in terms of controlling.
On the east side?
On the east side, correct. So there would be some type of fencing slash barrier. We've talked about, you know, different treatments there, but it would extend at least up past where Winslow Gate is, along the west side of the road in order to direct the pedestrian traffic to the Marist North crossing.
So is there any, was there any proposal to extend past the, on the west side of Route 9, past the bus stop on?
Yes.
Up, you know, going for the north sidewalk?
So, so where the bus stop on, well, the bus stop on the east side of Route 9 is being relocated. It's being relocated to the north side of Winslow Gate.
Okay. Right, yep. Phil.
So the existing bus stop falls between the Home Depot driveway and Winslow Gate.
Right.
That bus stop is being relocated to become a far side bus stop.
As, okay, because you're making a right turn into the Winslow Gate.
Correct.
That, that makes sense.
Correct.
What about the bus stop on the west side then, in front of the Marist dorms?
That's being kept where it is right now unless something changes as we're going through the, you know, final design plans with DOT.
And right now, there's no sidewalks further north from that.
Correct. And there, and there's no proposal to do anything there. Correct.
So sidewalks for, if Marist students want to go up to Quiet Cove Park, they'll have to cross there, go all along the whole.
Right now, yes.
Okay.
Bill, can you, question for Phil. Can you talk about the, all the traffic improvements, pedestrian improvements, the fencing that you just mentioned? Everything is in a DOT right-of-way and would be their responsibility to maintain going forward?
Correct. The, the improvements are within the right-of-way, actually, and Route 9 is pretty wide through this entire section. So all the improvements that we're doing are within the state right-of-way. There's no land dedication. With respect to Winslow Gate Drive and Hudson View Drive, the only infrastructure that would be, I'll say, outside of the DOT right-of-way is the signal, some of the signal loops or the, the hockey pucks that we're using. And that's being incorporated into any, you know, an agreement for maintenance. But all the physical infrastructure improvements along Route 9 are within the Route 9 right-of-way, including sidewalks, the relocation, the bus stop, et cetera.
So for all the hockey pucks that are outs, outside the DOT right-of-way, you are in the process or have secured easements from those property owners?
Correct.
And you'll be able to.
We're, for example, with respect to Quiet Cove Park, there is some detection that will be on the driveway to Quiet Cove Park. So we're working with the county right now on that. So there's no issues about maintenance, et cetera.
So you provide documentation, obviously, to the DOT and, and copy the tech on that?
Yes.
Okay.
What would your estimate, and maybe this may not be a fair question, but pedestrian traffic, what do you see, given the population of students living now on the west side of Route 9?
Yes.
And perhaps people that will be moving into these apartments and then working or going to Marist? The uptick in pedestrian traffic trying to get across Route 9 north of the tunnel?
Well, there's, there's two things that are ongoing. One is the county is advancing plans for the CSX. So eventually, there'll be a, I think the longer-term plan is to actually have that as a pedestrian corridor that would actually connect to this property. And as part of the site plan, correct me if I'm wrong, Kyle, we have a connection, connecting point to the project from that. So I think long-term, it's planned out that that would be the corridor. So if you were on the west side of the campus, down, you know, near Fulton, you could actually come across, get onto that trail and work your way up to this project. In the interim, that would, could still occur through the sidewalk system on the east side of Route 9. I think at the crossing at Marist North, you'll see uptick of pedestrian movements there, of course, to the, to the site. But the longer-term plan is to use the CSX line for.
They still have to get from the west side to the east side.
Yes.
And that CSX is south of there.
Correct. But in terms of right now, if you were coming to this project, even if you came through the tunnel, okay, you would then either work your way through the Home Depot Shopping Center or you would use the sidewalk along Route 9. So in the future, once the CSX trail is developed, that would be a pedestrian path to get.
And I'm not disagreeing with any of that. My concern is, if you're not using the tunnel, whether you come up the sidewalk on the east side or there's potential of a CSX, I'm concerned about safety for people trying to get across it.
Just one comment, the, the connection that Phil is referring to, long-term to CXX, short-term, we connect to that road that goes to Marist under the tunnel. So if you're walking under the tunnel, you can either make a left heading north on east of the sidewalks, or alternatively, you can go through the tunnel and go straight east and then connect to the path that.
Okay.
I, I think in terms of, you're going to see an increased pedestrian crossing at Marist North driveway across to the Home Depot side and to the project.
That's my concern.
It's going to be significant.
And I think the board should be concerned too.
I think that's part of the, part of the secondary reason DOT wants this adaptive signal control is to help with the efficiencies when you do have pedestrian crossing calls that you'll be able to pick up some of the efficiency by having the adaptive signal.
I, I don't know if the board's, you know, familiar with what an adaptive traffic signal is. It's like the latest technology, you know, intelligent transportation systems. So Phil, maybe just want to give them like a brief explanation of how it works?
Yeah, we have some new members, but so, fine, that'd be great.
So historically, at traffic signals, you started with what were called pre-time signals. It was a fixed amount of time for each movement, each approach to a signal. Then came along actuation where you would know if there's a call on, let's say, on a side driveway, it would know that there's traffic waiting to get into the system. Over time, that developed into where from one signal to another signal on a corridor like Route 9, they would develop timing patterns, what we call time-space diagrams, to allow the, the signals to progress, to allow traffic flow efficiently. The limitation on that was that you would have set timing patterns that would be based on historical volumes over the course of an hour and day-to-day.
As opposed to real-time?
Now we've come into real-time with hockey pucks and/or cameras. We know exactly, you know, right at that moment, what the demand is on each approach. So the signals can adapt to, not just the pattern that's in place for one or two or three hours at a time, it can adapt to the actual peaking that may occur or if something out of the ordinary occurs. And then it allows the signal to adjust to that specific situation. So it's called adaptive, it's because it's adapting to what's out there at that point in time.
Which system or which ATS system are you employing?
I'm sorry?
Which ATS system are you employing?
It's, I forget what the DOT latest, Syncro Green, I think.
Syncro Green, yes, the same one on Route 6. DOT wants consistency with their adaptive.
Correct.
So it is the Syncro Green system, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so what, what, in the last three years, Anthony, two, two to three years, DOT has finally embraced the use of adaptive in this region, and we're using what's called Syncro Green. There's about three or four systems that are already functioning out there.
One in Cortland, Route 6.
Correct.
Has already been in operation just for a few months now.
Yeah.
And generally favorable results because you can monitor the performance of the system to see how well it's doing.
Correct. That's right on the border of Cortland and leading into Yorktown.
The, the project we approved recently that's gaining steam is the Eastdale Village, and that app, that developer has.
And that app, that developer has consented to work with DOT to provide adaptive signaling and what have you at many intersections that are far afield from the particular project. As you can well imagine, I won't go into that. So, I'd like to request that maybe you could fix some what is back in Kill and, and Wilbur Boulevard, that would be great on.
Hey, John, could you just, you brought up pedestrian traffic, but, I mean, I think we're in a rare case here where there are two major projects that are probably, one in each municipality that are going to go on at the same time, correct me if I'm wrong, or close to each other, the one right up in Hyde Park?
Bella Field.
Bella Field. So, within a pretty short span of each other with two major colleges. So, I just, I don't know if, I'm not asking you to have any communication with them, but I don't know, maybe on our end, there might-
Has DOT requested there'd be some linkage between those?
Um, the only, at this point, the only thing DOT has required is in terms of the incorporation of the traffic data and pedestrian data. And the improvements that we have, I don't think are, what should I say, dependent on their improvements. They're, they've assigned improvements to each project independently.
Yeah, but usually they ask for some kind of coordination. I'm just, and I-
Are you talking about in terms of during construction?
I'm just talking about overall, maybe like-
Operational?
This is just a suggestion, like maybe it'd be to have an, you know, just a meeting to compare notes.
I wouldn't want you to get blindsided by DOT that says all of a sudden, oh, wait a minute, did you coordinate with that up project up the road and this one to make sure everything's working together?
Well, I think one of the reasons, I, I don't know the specifics of what they're required to do in terms of adaptive, but I believe DOT is working this adaptive throughout the entire corridor. So, I'll find out and make sure and we'll, you know, coordinate with Anthony just to make sure the coordination. But what I've been told is there's certain things that they're requiring of that development to do, such as adaptive as you get up near-
We just don't want you to get blindsided either, but if that's going on, I think that's great.
And I think coming from just a resident standpoint too, I mean, of coordination, just to talk, you know, because it's obvious that it hasn't happened yet, that's not your fault, but DOT is DOT. So, you know, just maybe a comparison of notes across the board. That's just not from traffic, but just overall, because you're coming from, you know, two dormant properties to now your monstrosities that are going to go on them. So, which is great, but-
That's a good point. We could discuss that with DOT.
Thank you. Perfect. Anybody else?
I have a couple of questions, not for, regarding traffic, but regarding some engineering questions. One is in the, in the findings statement for this project under, where it's addressing wastewater and the dedication of new lines to the town. There's a section there, E, it says, "The existing trunk sewer line along Route 9 was originally proposed to serve the project. However, new sanitary sewer mains are now proposed. New mains will be installed in alignment that's suitable to the site's topography and so forth." But it doesn't indicate, who's going to pay for those lines?
So, the installation is by the applicant. There's a potential grant being sought for, for a portion of that reconstruction. It's actually a state line currently. The sewer lines within the right of way will be dedicated to the town. And as such, the, the maintenance will be part of the sewer district.
Right.
The private lines, you know, the ones that are service lines essentially, will remain private and therefore will be, you know, privately maintained.
By the applicant?
By the applicant and subsequent users.
Okay. I just think that that should probably be spelled out. Because it's not, it's not clear, according, in the findings document, it is not clear.
Well, it states everything in the town right of ways to be town ownership.
This on a state road?
No, town right of way.
Those details will most likely be spelled out through the site plan approval process in the conditions of approval.
Okay, as long as at some point, they're spelled out, so there's no ambiguity. Certainly, that's going to be an expensive proposition. I want to ask you, and you don't have to respond to this now, but our engineer expressed some concerns about, and the SWIP, the Stormwater Management Practice will be owned by Sabre Real Estate Advisors, which is a different entity from the applicant, DFG, DRA Heritage. So, that just, that has to be, that's just a housekeeping item?
Yeah, the ownership was, is going to be revised to be consistent with the exact-
And the other thing, I don't have the memo from our engineer, but he also expressed concern and under drainage, where that you had proposed some lines, drainage lines to go under a wetland area that might require some, some consideration from the Army Corps of Engineers?
I believe the comment you're referring to has to do with the existing drainage piping that crosses the CSX right of way. I think we were just looking for some, just needed some clarification on the mapping in terms of how that-
Okay, as long as we get it.
Yeah.
As long as we get it.
Sure.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
Can I, let me jump in. I'm Liz Axelson, planner with CPL, working as the town's planning consultant on this. I wasn't involved in the environmental impact statement review, so my role is to just take a look at the findings, the approved development master plan, the modified development master plan and the statement. And, um, yes, Kyle, you did a real nice job responding to a lot of the comments. Probably when I do my comments, I wanted to hear what the board had to say tonight. But some of the explanation that you gave in your response letter, I think, could be knitted into the actual assessment itself. I just want to also reiterate that I think since this project assessment is going to be the planning board's record by which they decide whether the modified development master plan is consistent with the approved and whether the entirety is consistent with the town board's findings or whether there needs to be an amendment to the findings. It would be helpful to have these explanations, but also the structural engineers' report and a letter kind of summarizing things. The same is true of the architectural specialist to have a report and a letter. I know that we've heard a lot of this in the verbal record and it's very helpful and a lot of it is encouraging, but I think it would be good for the board to have this in the written record. So, I'll be writing up comments and we'll probably also have some offline consultation to button some of this up. And for the new board members that weren't involved originally, I kind of had to go back and forth and remind myself that the 80,000 square foot area that's based on the use of the main building is part of the proposed action. So, that later on, when you're reading the cultural resources assessment aspect, it's not talking about that as mitigation, because it isn't mitigation, it's part of the proposed action. And let me just see. I know that we briefly discussed some plan changes. We had an offline meeting and we briefly discussed the fact that there are now sort of two drive-throughs. And that was part of our discussion because it was a concern. And when I first saw that, I thought, gee, you're driving into the site and the first thing we see are two drive-throughs. On the other hand, those are closest to where they ought to be if somebody's going to use a drive-through. And I think there are some opportunities there for a little more landscaping to kind of make that nice. I'd suggested at that offline meeting that if it's going to be a coffee type place and bank, to really come up with some nice architecture, because that is the entry to the site. Just thinking. Having the table of mitigation in the document is very helpful. There's a little bit of back and forth about whether the pedestrian pathway actually changed. As it turns out, the pedestrian pathway originally proposed is basically, you know, there are some changes, but the length of it is about the same. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, the way it was broken down was, was broken down slightly differently. But end of the day, yes, it's a slight increase, but not substantial.
Okay. Let's just see if I had anything else.
And that's been revised in the last submitted project assessment, clarified, you know, the way it's broken down.
Great. Okay, those are, those are my main points. The rest I'll write up in my written comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. John mentioned that we want to make this a destination, basically. So, what in, I don't know if Marty, whoever, in your mind, will make this a destination where people will want to come because of the uniqueness of it. You hit on a good point. It'd be nice if, and we haven't seen the architecture, nothing's really cast in concrete yet, right?
Right.
Some of the architecture that could mirror or mimic some of the existing buildings or what was there to give it that same charm as, as the administration building will have and et cetera. If that, if the theme is throughout the site, might be an interesting way to look at some of this.
So, I think, we have provided a good amount of architectural samples in our previous submittals, but you can see in terms of the, the retail component here and here, you know, what makes it a destination is the fact that it's not national retailers per se, it's not a traditional strip center image. Each building, the buildings, as you see here, for example, are, let's see if I can get back to it, here, yeah, are, the buildings are broken up into configurations of 6,000 to 9,000 square feet, which will then be further broken up into individual retailers and restaurants. And the advantage of that is that each of them have an opportunity to provide their own image. In this picture, which is taken a mile after the King of Prussia Town Center, which we've sent you a whole set of photos of the individual buildings and architecture, each building has the opportunity to have a unique presence and a unique image and a, and a unique facade. So, it's that kind of environment combined with the retailers you put here that make the, the town center, the main street component, a destination. I think fair to say there's nothing like this in, in the county. We've done this recently, Rivertown Square, and not only does it work very well, but you then add in the hotel component, the residential component and the medical office component, and you really have, you know, a unique village that somebody, as I said, can wake up in the morning, drop their kid at the learning center, get coffee, work out at a gym, go retailing and go to work, and in the evening, they can come home to the supermarket, go to restaurants, pick up their child and go home. I think that in regard to the residential, it, it makes sense that to the extent that there's an administration building there that has a certain architectural look and feel to it, that no residential builder developer is going to build something to the right or left of it that's going to be a high-tech, modern type image. It doesn't make sense, it's not really warranted. And I think that's where you really have an opportunity to mix in the, the historic aspects of it. And similarly, the director's home is one of the first things that you see as you enter the property. And that's why we asked Mark to get going on it at this point in time, because it really sets the stage, sets the entrance for the community and the development.
Now, I think at some point, you know, the last thing we ever want to do is take money out of your pocket. But if you could, for the same amount, you know, when you look at like the flat roofs you have there, this is an historic revitalization district. We just had a project that was done beautifully. It's, it's going to be going into construction next year where they were very sensitive, you know, to the architecture of the Hudson Valley. If there were just, it's just some little tweaks that you could make, that's all we're asking you to do. We're not asking to completely, you know, but this is not a project in Arizona, this is in the Hudson Valley. And if you could just pay a little, ask your architect, come up with some ideas, you know, that would reflect our heritage. I mean, that's, that's what this location is. It's a, it's a historic district. So, if I'm saying the wrong thing?
No, I think you're, I think you're saying the same thing that we're saying. We had our architects, as well as our leasing people, as well as all of the tenants that we've talked to, we've actually had them spend a lot of time up on this corridor. They've walked Marist College and seen the architectural elements there, they've walked Culinary Institute.
It's not reflected in that drawing. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I don't, you're right. And they've walked the, the corridor. And we've expressed to them that the materials that we're using need to be indicative of the corridor. This particular photo, you really can't see the details, but yes, this has somewhat of a modern image to it. However, the materials and stones and woods and fabrics that we've, we're planning on using here tie into the same as, as Marist and the Culinary Institute.
Just asking you to take a look at maybe some, some different design approaches and just take a look at them, just take a look.
Couple of comments. With respect to the engineer's evaluation of the stability of the building, if he could maybe put some language in to satisfy the board that the floors are going to be able to bear the load for the snow and, and water. And also, it's probably preliminary at this point, but the suggestion earlier about a tree survey down the road might be helpful if there are in fact large trees that are-
I'm fairly certain that-
Joe was saying that before.
Oh, excuse me? I'm fairly certain that a tree study has been already done and part of the reports, et cetera. Our interest candidly is to clear the brush from the Route 9 so you can see in to the site, particularly the commercial main street area. But our, at the same time, our intention is to preserve these old beautiful trees because they're irreplaceable and they provide significant amenities to the residential development, the hotel development, obviously, the great lawn, et cetera.
They're a natural resource to the area, so it's good to keep them.
Yeah, shade, extra shade is always good in a pedestrian environment as well.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Andy? I just had to mention the, you talked about the engineering report, structural report, but it was also brought up a report about the fire, if you have any details of what-
We haven't received anything from the fire department, other than some verbal comments that they had some ideas as to who set it and we're tracking it down, but we haven't received anything from the traffic, from the fire department.
So, nothing official yet.
Go ahead, Andy. Andy?
I guess, one thing, if you could go back to the loop, the Ring Road image that you had shown with the additional parking in the front, I just want to clarify, no, the one you showed up before, that one. I just want to clarify that the roads that are shown is Hudson View and then the Winslow Gate Road there, that's the main T intersection there. So, those will be town roads.
Yes.
Just want to point out, it's not really, it's a planning consideration, but it's something that we normally think about in terms of, you know, road design and sight layout, is that if that's road is a town road, technically, that parking is in the front yard. I just want to, it's a, it's a consideration that the, the board may want to think about for those, those apartments. I guess, some other, you know, comments in terms of the, the development master plan, I guess we did have some comments on the stormwater management plan that we just would want to see that, those, that revised SWIP updated. And also, we had some questions about the sewer flow rates, with most of which have been revised, addressed in the most recent submission. But I did have some questions about the Education Performance Center. Can you elaborate on, on that a little bit?
So, it's currently, actually, do you want to?
Well, we, we're in, we have had discussions with Marist about their desire to have an expanded facility where they could provide lectures, perhaps theaters, discussions, classrooms for, for adult education. We thought it was a great idea in connection with our senior housing group. They thought it would be a significant windfall.
Try the other one. The battery might have gone, try that one maybe.
I, I tried that one, I think our time's on.
Or the one right in front of you.
Yeah, just talking to the-
Yeah, the one right in front of you.
This one?
Yeah, that'll work.
I see. So, so we've had discussions along the lines of, of creating for them an opportunity for them to lease from us a, a pad to construct a arts and education center. And we fully acknowledge that it, that all the property has to be for, for, on the tax rolls and owned by us. So, it's a clear understanding that they would be a user, a tenant-
it's a clear understanding that they would be a user, a tenant, as not, not a purchaser of the property. And we have provided them through our construction company, uh, seven or eight similar type of theaters and structures that range from $400 a square foot to $800 a square foot. That range from 20,000 to 35,000 square feet. And over the next six months or so, they'll start thinking about working out the details of programming and determine what they're looking at and what their needs are.
I, I guess, um, from my perspective, um, in terms of wastewater or sewer water flows, it looked like there may be, um, a retail, restaurants or a coffee shop possibly proposed in that building?
No, in, in that building, there'll probably be, there'll be a, a, um, a warm-up kitchen.
Okay.
It won't be a restaurant or anything. It'll be, uh.
Right. So the idea for the, from the sewer generation calculation standpoint was that, um, you know, we basically have a placeholder there for any kind of food prep that might be at one of these events.
Okay.
But all our discussions, it was contemplated to be a warming kitchen with food brought in, warmed up and served.
Okay, so minimal, minimal, minimal commercial kitchen flows.
Correct.
Brian? One question here for the town engineer. I'm sorry.
I was trying to go in order.
But if it's in that same.
Same vein? Yeah, go ahead. Their, uh, project is in the Fourth Ward Sewer District. Now, the flow is going to the city plant, city town plant.
Correct.
There was an agreement with the prior owner, I think, actually goes back to the state where they had an allocation of use, daily usage. Does that automatically go with the land? Does it go with the owner or does it go, automatically go with the land?
Well, excuse me, there hasn't been a change in ownership, by the way, so whatever is.
Well, at some point, at some point, I'm just wondering, you have to have it enter into a, a new agreement.
I, I think we've been going on the, on, on the assumption that, that it would go with the land. Um, I, I think it's, it's kind of an attorney question more than, uh, us, but we're, we're assuming that the flow rates are available for them, um, at this point, because.
Yeah, the flow should be available. My question is, do they have, does there have to be a new agreement?
I was enjoying watching you answer the question. From a, from a flow perspective, there was a study undertaken in, in connection with SEACRA that there is going to be sufficient, uh,
And that's not the.
capacity, right. But the issue of, of now there's, now will there be agreement with, with the existing owner? If there is a change in, in ownership, which there probably will be, that new owner is going to have to, um, take, take over the responsibilities and the ownership.
I understand. I understand all that. My question just basically is, you know, have you, have you discussed a new agreement with the sewer district or with the town board, really?
There is, there isn't one required because of the SEACRA document. Um, it's with the project. Um, so, I mean, we'll.
So the flow automatically goes with the owner?
We'll be preparing an engineering report to submit to the district and the, the county department of health. But no, that, that hasn't been something requested.
Would it be the transportation corporation of any kind?
Right. It's, I, I think it's probably because it was, it's premature at this point to, to, to do that, because you're.
We haven't submitted to that.
That's why we're here. It's called planning, you know, plan ahead. That's what we're doing.
I have a quick question, since we're on the subject of flow. Um, since you're inviting the public in essentially to make it a walkable space, is there any contemplation of having a public restroom either around the green area or someplace on site?
Well, most of the retail restaurant, the restaurants and the supermarket, et cetera, will have bathrooms in it, but no, we didn't make any, give any thought to having a, just a freestanding bathroom, no.
Yes, Brian?
I was just going to go back to the topic we started with, um, and I think a lot of the folks have left. And so the last time you were here, there was a lot of frustration on your part on vandalism and, uh, I think that preceded, that was before the fire. Have, do you, have you worked with or are you, I mean, obviously I'm not saying, have you talked to the police department? Have you talked to the council person for that ward on, I mean, especially at this time of the year, in the next two weeks? Lot of people like access that shouldn't have access to that building.
Like Halloween?
Yes. There, I don't know if you've seen, but when the fire cropped up, there was a lot of activity on social media.
Sure.
Pertaining to the main administrative building.
We, we have engaged the town police to provide daily and evening service. And we have had ongoing discussions with them and are having current discussions about modifying the means and methods of that in order to try to improve it. We also have a couple of hour, three hours, uh, asbestos and demolition company. They have some, um, presence on the site now, uh, in the evening hours, and they've been hugely successful in, uh, in catching some of these individuals. Each one of them is quite sizable and they've been able to, uh, capture quite a few of them and bring them to the police department. So in addition to that, uh, we are, we have had the suggestion of this historical association made arrangements to, um, uh, light up the building, the administration building. And, uh, the lights were on site last week. They're solar powered, so they're required some time to be energized. Uh, those, if not up now, will be up in the next day or two. And then there's some additional fencing that's going up. But we're open to suggestions.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, utilize as well, you know, the town resources that are available to you. Because you've been, I'm trying to come in on being patient with that, um, and, uh, and still coming back to it and trying to preserve it after everything that's happened to that building. I think that should be mentioned as well on the record.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said, I think you should, it should be commended on your patience and the fact that you're coming back to that building. I know there are some laws and, and rules in place, but you're still trying to save it, um, minus firewind, snow, rain.
Yes.
And some crazy people. So, good for you.
Joe, how much is our, we spending monthly on it, on the, on security?
Don't remind them.
Yeah, it, it's a sizable amount of money every month for security.
Great. Thank you.
Do you monitor social media for these kinds of things? Is it, you're someone in your organization doing that? Who does that?
Candidly, uh, I don't think we do that, no.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how that all occurs, you know, it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perhaps we'll, we'll advertise our security, uh, policies on social media. That's probably.
And a picture of the great big guy that's got.
Big guys, yeah.
That's probably a good idea.
Do they have their own Facebook page?
I think that perhaps we'll, we should advertise our, so, our security in place on social media. That might prevent them a little bit. It's a good idea.
Marty, we also regularly notify Marist. Marist and all of the local colleges have been notified on a regular basis. And our policy, when it was changed and stepped up, was, was broadcast through all the universities in the area. So they're aware of it as we change the policies.
Good.
But I think perhaps, uh, stating on social media that we have, uh, you know, tack dogs and people on site is probably a, a good idea. I didn't think of that.
Whatever works, right?
Get the word out.
Any other comments?
Okay. I think we're good. That was a very good, I mean, this is a very good interactive, interactive session this evening.
Yeah, thank you. And just the last note, as we said in our work session, I think the work session was very beneficial, particularly given the timing of the meetings. So if we can continue to have more work sessions between the meetings, it would help expedite our process as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good job.
Oh, was I got it? I did get a copy. I think this is an.
Yes, sir.
Anyone that's interested in learning more about the hospital this Sunday at Adrian's Library, there's going to be a lecture with personnel from the hospital. We're going to talk about the hospital and how it, you know, what it did in the past and how it functioned. And it's at 2:30 at Adrian's Library.
2:30 Adrian's Library this Sunday? It's about the history of the, the Hudson River State Hospital? Okay.
Personnel that worked in the hospital.
From people who actually worked there, they're going to, that's, that's interesting. Oh, wow.
We can read the book.
It's the authors of the book.
What's the name of the book?
It's Images of America Hudson River State Hospital.
Images of America Hudson River State Hospital. Okay, that's the book. Great. Thank you for that information. Great, thank you.
We need a motion to close.
We need a motion to close.
Yeah, they were, would you like?
We terminate the meeting.
Call a question, all is a favor?
Aye.
Pose. I don't, I, I oppose. No. Question carries five, nothing. Thank you, everybody.